Call the meeting to order. You join roll call.
Belsley. Blunier.
Yes.
Herr.
Here.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman. Parrott.
Here.
We have a board.
If you join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearing tonight and we do have a presentation tonight. Where is Dr. Hill? He's not here yet. Oh, there you are. I knew the car was in the parking lot. Okay, so we have Dr. Hill with us. Why don't you come up to the mic? Introduce yourself and welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Hill. I'm Superintendent of Morton District 709. So thanks for allowing me to present some information tonight on county facility sales tax for schools. Make sure I'm pointing this in the right direction. Here we go. Just a little background information. This went into effect 2007 and it allows voters to fund school facilities through sales tax, 1 percent maximum. Currently, Illinois has 51 counties that have passed the county facility sales tax. And right now, if you take a look at our map, you'll notice that Tazewell essentially is touched by counties in green that have all passed the county facility sales tax, with the exception of McLean County. The language on the ballot's a little bit, I don't know, tricky or oddly worded, I guess I'd say. Shall retailers occupation tax and a service occupation tax, commonly referred to as a sales tax, be imposed in Tazewell County at a rate of 1 percent to be used exclusively for school facility purposes. It's almost like a riddle. And in explaining the tax, it's easier to explain what's not being taxed for the county facility sales tax, though you'll notice on the slide here groceries aren't taxed, medications, prescriptions are not taxed. Large items, cars, trucks, ATVs, farm equipment, and anything that's currently not taxed will not be taxed by that county facility sales tax. Oops, let me go back a slide here. Sorry about that. If the county facility sales tax is passed, then July 1, those revenues are collected. Illinois Department of Revenue receives all the tax dollars, which is typical. They send the county facility sales tax portion back to the Regional Office of Education. Then they start to distribute those funds on a per pupil basis. Morton currently possesses 14 percent of Tazewell County students. It's about a $656 per student dollar amount. That's based on the 2017 county sales tax figures. Clearly, sales tax can fluctuate over time, so it's just based on the most recent sales tax figures that we have. 13.7 million for Tazewell and then for the Morton School District, it's a little over $2 million for our 14 percent of student population. This chart just shows you what the school district can use the funds for. So new constructions, additions, renovation, security, any kind of architectural planning, stationary equipment, fire prevention, energy efficiency, anything that's really related to facilities, including tax abatement, can be used. School districts can use the money in a few different ways. Just meant retiring some existing debt. That can be done. You can issue new bonds against the sales tax receipts and pay-as-you-go capital finance. So the Morton 709 Board has really focused on property tax relief. And there's really two ways that they're going to provide that. They passed a resolution in September to create a policy for how the revenue should be utilized. In that policy, they would indicate that they would not extend the levy fully for one year. And then they would also pay off annually the construction bonds that we currently have outstanding with the 2015 referendum for four years until they were paid off. This would save the owner of a $200,000 home roughly $200 a year for the first four years until the bonds are paid off. And then after that, it's roughly $60 per year, not including CPI each year. There's just a quick review of the local sales tax rates in the county and also outside the county. You have a couple, maybe Peoria is there as well as the Bloomington-Normal area. Just gives you a kind of a picture of sales tax in those different communities. So just a quick summary. Morton 709 plans on using this for initially for tax relief. Long term, which was not part of the slides, but long term, we've got $19 million worth of facilities we're planned over the next 15 years. And that's just repair and maintenance. That's not renovating facilities or trying to bring anything up to date. That's just our current 15-year plan for maintenance and repairs. So obviously, it helps us with long-term planning. It also, as you can tell by our map, people that are visiting Tazewell County will not participate in helping pay for school facility costs in Tazewell, much like we do in surrounding counties currently. It's my question slide. So questions?
Any of you trustees have a question? Dr. Hill?
Sorry, go ahead. You talked about Morton's students being about 14 percent of the student population. Do you know on a, so we'll get 14 percent of that pot of money essentially? Do you have any idea what percent we contribute to that sales tax if we contribute around the same amount? Or do you have any idea?
I really don't. That's a hard...
I think that from the economic side of it, that we would be significantly less. So we would, Morton taxpayers would be a net beneficiary because obviously, if you think of a retail standpoint of things are being spent, of our retail being compared to Peckham, East Peoria, wherever you want to go, that those tax dollars, there's more tax dollars being generated in those other areas than in Morton. If that makes sense. I think that's a pretty fair assessment from what we've seen from the economic development, the EDC side of it. I think it's pretty fair to say that we would be net winners in that versus our, you know...
Here's an estimated 20 to 30 percent of sales tax receipts are coming from outside of Tazewell County. So folks just passing through, visiting.
Okay.
I did a calculation based on our sales tax reports that we get. And had we just put a 1 percent sales tax addition on, it'd be about 2.5 million a year. So I think of the 2.1, it's pretty close to what's taken in, about $400,000 less than it was just a normal 1 percent sales tax added to the rate that we've charged to everything that would be charged here.
Another question would be, as far as the student population, has there been a steady increase or any sort of increase in the student population?
We're growing, I would say, methodically. So we're picking up anywhere between 30 to 50 students in the last couple of years. We will have some enrollment projections at our next board meeting, so the 23rd. We've updated our last enrollment projections from five years ago, so we'll have a better idea at that point in time. Matthew Cropper from Cropper Consulting has done this projecting for us in the past and then he'll be providing that information for us again.
So that's information to come, I guess?
Yeah, there's information to come. Now, we do, based on the last time we went through the county facility sales tax, we do have an increased share of the county students. So that percentage has gone up since the last time this was on the ballot.
So the school district, as far as size of employees, has that also increased in the past, we say, year to two years? Has there been, how many full-time employees do you know offhand?
We added 12 and 1/2 employees this last year. Based on some academic planning study that we had done and increased programming, fully kindergarten being part of that, an emphasis on literacy. So we have literacy coaches in each of our elementary schools. And then also in our high school and junior high school, really trying to reduce the counselor-to-student ratio. So we were at about 1 to 300 counselor to students and now we're down to about 1 to 200 for a couple of different reasons. One is just social, emotional needs of students, but also to help our students with career planning, academic planning, and so they can get closer attention in working through those things.
So it wasn't really a decision based upon an increase in student population?
No, it was really more an interest in trying to improve some areas of programming.
Okay. And then as far as going back a couple of years ago when there was a tax increase, that was, remind me how many years that was supposed to be in place for?
The referendum.
The referendum.
I believe the bonds were seven years, if I'm not mistaken.
Seven years? And is that still the intention, is to, after seven years, is to, is to forego that tax increase? And that was, how much was that? I can't remember. I'm trying to remember offhand. Because that was a facilities-type tax, I guess.
It was roughly $9 million. So I think that's been about, rough numbers, probably about $140 on a person who owns a $200,000 home.
And so with that increase, you believe, would you take the stance, you believe that this 1 percent is still needed even on top of the money that was given?
Well, we'd be giving the money back, actually, with this, with the facility sales tax being passed. So that's part of, part of the district's plan, is to abate those taxes, which then means the district's paying that money and a tax carryover.
Thank you.
Yep. Other questions?
If not, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Anyone would like to make a public comment? Please state your name and address.
Hello. My name is Troy Saunders. My address is 207 Stonecrop Road here in Morton. My wife, Ann, and I have lived in Morton for about 25 years. I'm here tonight to help get the word out about a possible scam that's been affecting lots of people throughout Illinois and including many people maybe here in Morton. About two weeks ago, my wife was talking to a woman who disclosed that she was having trouble paying her electric bills. My wife suggested that she talk to a few local agencies that might be able to help her. Unfortunately, this woman also has a speech impediment, which makes communicating very difficult. Given the situation, my wife did what most caring wives would do. She volunteered to have me come and talk to her. So I went over and spent a couple hours at her place and went through her electric bills for the past year. What I discovered is that she has, he has been charged more than double what I am paying for my electricity at my house. In case you didn't know, several years ago, our state was one of many that deregulated electrical supply laws, giving consumers more choices and the opportunity to get better rates for the electricity we use. So if you look at your Ameren Illinois electric bill, you will see it's broken down into two separate charges. Number one is the electrical delivery. This includes the payment for the infrastructure, which are the poles, the lines, the transformers, et cetera, that allows the electricity to flow to our homes, businesses and such. This is provided by Ameren Illinois. The second is the electric supply. This is a payment for the actual electricity that we use. This can be provided by a lot of different companies. And this is your choice and this is the problem that I encountered. The Village of Morton takes bids for their electrical supply for all companies that are interested and then allows all Morton residents to accept these rates. So unless you opted out and went with another company, you should be with whoever the low bidder for Morton is. The current low bid is Home Field Energy and that current rate is about 5.0 cents per kilowatt hour. If you check your bill on page three, I believe, of Ameren is where you'll find those breakdowns. Unfortunately, this woman was being charged over 11 cents per kilowatt hour for the last year versus the 5.7 cents per kilowatt hour. How could this happen? As I mentioned earlier, you were given a choice on who supplies you with this electricity. These supply companies contact people and convince you to switch by giving you a very good rate that will save you money. And some of them even offer gift cards and all that great stuff. However, when these rates are given to you, they're only for a set period of time, typically one to one and a half years. The issue is when that period expires. They are required to send you something in the mail to notify you that your contract period is expiring. If you don't get this notice and respond back to them, then they can put you on a variable rate plan. This is exactly what happened to this woman. She never saw the notice, so she was put on this company's variable rate plan. This allowed the electric company, which is the supply company, to charge her, I guess, whatever they wanted, which amounted to over 100 percent more than what the current standard rates were. And in her case, this overcharge has amounted to over $1,000. As soon as I discovered this, I contacted the electric supply company listed on her bill by phone and email and filed a complaint. I also contacted Ameren Illinois and filed a complaint against this electric supply Next, I contacted our local state representative, Keith Summer, by phone, email, and a meeting in person. Lastly, I contacted the Illinois Commerce Commission and filed a complaint against this electric supply company. The good news is, as it stands right now, I have received some communication back from the electric supply company and we are waiting for a settlement. So we're hoping that this will end in a good way. So by this time, I was concerned that there, that this was a problem that was happening to other people as well. So after discussing the situation with Craig Lautermil, the Village of Morton's Director of Public Works, I decided to come tonight and attempt to get information out to all the residents. So as I said earlier, please check your electric bills and verify that you are not being overcharged. You should be paying between 4 cents per kilowatt hour to 6 cents per kilowatt hour. If not, you could be spending hundreds to thousands of dollars too much. So if you're interested in more information, please go to a website, pluginelinois.org. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Craig, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think this is a concern that we have. I think right now there are 34 residential suppliers registered with Ameren. So as rates get competitive, they can legally walk around town, come to your door, solicit that.
Unfortunately, they do a really good job on the phone because actually, all they need is their Ameren account number and they can switch it over very quickly. And in the previous boards, Ginger did a really, Ginger Herman did a really nice job explaining some of those things and trying to make people aware, but there are always a few that just, it slips through and people can be very convincing, but typically stick with the Home Field deal.
Morton has the cheapest rate.
Yes.
Well, let's be cautious with that. There's 34 residential suppliers. I'm sure there's some good ones out there. Alls I would say is verify the term, the rate. If you've got questions, call us. Call us at Village Hall and we'd be glad to talk with you. But we're not here to, as Troy said, this is a law, deregulation's a law, and we respect that law. So they're out there. You might be able to get a better rate, but we did, with our bids, even that Troy mentioned, we're along with, I don't even know how many other communities, but Peoria, Peckham, a lot of other communities. So, and our term is set and our rate is set.
So until you check it out, I wouldn't give your Ameren number to anybody.
Correct. Yeah, I wouldn't give that out. So verify that. But feel free to call us if you've got questions or you want to know what our term and rate is. We'll give you factual information.
Mr. Mayor, just to add on to what Craig was saying is that we do have individuals representing various energy companies that come and register with the police department as registered solicitors. But this isn't to be construed that the village or the police department is endorsing them or sanctioning it, other than they are able to go door-to-door. And again, whether it's on the phone or not, I would not show them your bill because that's one thing that they do attempt to get.
And rates are competitive right now. I mean, they're very competitive. So my thing is, when they're out, it means they're competitive. If they're not here, we have the best rate, so not to confuse that. When things are close and the market's tight, they will be out and they're looking for business. You know, legal ways to look for business. Just be cautious of what the fine print says.
And the village staff is available to answer any of those questions, so you should really get a village opinion.
It's difficult for, we get a lot of the questions after the fact. And once you've switched, like my discussions with Troy, I can't really help you a whole lot at that point.
Troy, thank you for taking time out of your personal schedule to do all that research on behalf of the entire community. We really appreciate that.
I hope we have a good end result there.
Yes, yeah. Well, Keith, and Keith Summer has helped me with that a fair amount. I've already contacted him. I know, I know they made a few phone calls and, you know, the Illinois Commerce Commission was very interested as well. So in looking at the stuff online, this particular supply company, which I will not name, is one of the more well-known that seems to have some issues.
Well, thank you for bringing it forward. Any other public comments? If not, the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting October 1, 2018, and the approval of the bills. A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Blunier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Thank you. Village clerk.
That's night, Your Honor.
Village administrator.
I have a few things tonight, Your Honor. Item A on the agenda is Resolution Number 13-19, which is a resolution authorizing changes to the annual funding calculation and property tax levy for the Morton Police Pension Fund.
Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. You want to explain that to us?
Basically, what I'm bringing forth is, based on advice that we received from our actuary, number one change on this would be to adopt, the Illinois Department of Insurance oversees public pension funds, and they have adopted new demographic and mortality assumptions, basically which are looking at when people would normally retire, at what normal age, what age people would normally pass away at, and then also what's the probability of an officer becoming disabled, those type of things, when they look to the future to calculate what liability would be the villages down the road. Second thing is to increase, currently, we use an interest rate or return on our investments of 5.5 percent interest currently as to calculate what funding is required. We have been returning a return of approximately 7 percent for the last couple of years and they advise us to increase it from 5 and 1/2 to 6 percent, which is still a pretty conservative rate. But that way, it gives us a more accurate depiction of if our returns remain basically the same as what they are currently, that would, the growth of the fund based on its investments would become. But the third thing that is the most effective is to revise the calculation to attain 100 percent funded status by the year 2040. And basically, what we're, the goal of the year 2040 is the state has passed a law that all public pension funds have to be at least 90 percent funded by the year 2040. We are currently at, at the end of last year, we were at 64 percent funded, which when you hear that, you think, well, that's not very good. But in comparison to most public police pensions in the state of Illinois, we're in really good shape. But what this graph depicts, if you look in the red, that is, if we don't change the goal and we look to be 90 percent funded by the year 2040, no, sorry, in the black is, is it black or is it blue? The dark color. It's black on my paper, but it looks blue up there. That would be the indication of what funding would be required if we look to be 90 percent funded by the year 2040. As you can see, in the year 2040, it gets the funding requirement to be approximately $1.2 million per year. And that would get us to, like I said, 90 percent funded. What I suggest and what he is recommending is that we go for the goal of being 100 percent funded by 2040, which means we take a little bit of an uptake. Approximately $50,000 would be required more this year. And as you can see, it gradually becomes higher, but it's more of a steady amount rather than this upward ski slope that we would end up with if we were to stay at the 90 percent funded. In addition, if you look beyond the year 2040, when everything gets short, in red, our contributions to maintain that 100 percent funded status would be a lot less than what they are currently. This isn't something that's going to go away. You know, we have talked about this. Since I've been here, we've raised our annual levy for property taxes up to $676,000 this current year. This would take it up to $726,000 for 2018, payable in 2019. However, I think it's a better, more fiscally responsible track to put us on so that we don't end up... This isn't something that's going to go away. You know, we have talked about this. Since I've been here, we've raised our annual levy for property taxes up to $676,000 this current year. This would take it up to $726,000 for 2018, payable in 2019. However, I think it's a better, more fiscally responsible track to put us on, so that we don't end up having to come up, you know, I know it's 22 years down the road, I couldn't do the math earlier, but it's 22 years down the road. You don't want to think that far, but I don't want to burden a future board with having to come up with, I imagine the money, amount of money would be, probably be bigger than 1.2 million down the road, based on, this is taking into effect current raises on police, you know, it's not looking at, you know, anything higher than what we currently are giving to the police forces, so.
So, that's, I, I don't mean to cut you off, but my biggest worry is the negotiation we went through was not good. I mean, right? I mean, as a board, we can all sit here, and I'll, I'll talk about it, does that, and we're up against the wall in that, when you go, even if future boards don't want to give the raises, and they're not willing to work with us, knowing what the expenses are going up, right? Because we know that the package, right? I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to be the only one sitting here saying this, right? Because this is ridiculous, right? So, the, the point is, is that with the, whether we're talking about salaries or benefits or whatever, what we're up against as a village and a board, just with that part of it, does that even, I know you just, you, you made a huge calculation of an adjustment from five and a half percent assumption to six. That scares me, just that in itself, just because we've done it.
For the last two years.
Last few years, everyone can, can appoint to pretty good, healthy return with the stock market the last few years, so if that number goes down, and then we also don't take into account what the future boards are going to have to go against, because when we go to arbitration, or when we go to, what's the other one besides arbitration that doesn't work?
Mediation.
Mediation, neither one of them worked for us, right?
Right.
Are those being calculated?
They're looking at what they consider...
And what's the, yeah, what are the, what are the metrics and math on that?
Right. They're just looking at what they consider in their demographics, what the average raises are, you know, they are considering raises down the road. You know, the, the thing that, to consider in this, and also, is this is the same place that everything, you know, the city of Peoria is up against...
Right.
...a huge amount of liability. I was looking at a report, I didn't bring it with me, there are funds in across the state, I was just looking at police pension funds, that are 19% funded. For them to go from where they're at to where they've got to be supposedly by 2040, those towns cannot come up with that kind of money. There's just no, you know, this, the thing that the public needs to know is every dollar that is levied, is levied for a purpose, so when, there's only a certain pot of money, so when it's, it's spread between that pot, so if we have to levy more for police pension funds, more for IMRF, more for Social Security and Medicare taxes, that reduces whatever we can levy for the general fund, for the general operations of the village. So, but I think, you know, we can push it on down the road and not make any changes, and only put 699,000 in this year versus 726, but I think we'd be doing a disservice to the future of this fund. The only caveat I will say is there is talk in Springfield of trying to come up with a fix for public pension funds. I've seen, the Illinois Municipal League gave the State House, I think, five different proposals. The only one I would agree with would be like taking our pension fund and basically doing like IMRF does. IMRF, for the nine police pensions in the village of Morton, we have a pot of money that is done, handled just in the same way, but then they take all those pots of money, and they can make a better return on that money than our small pot would make if we were doing it ourselves, I guess is the easiest way to say it. So, if that comes down the road, this is a good idea. One of the other ideas I've seen is that they take everybody's money, take all the liabilities for everybody's future pensions, put them all together, and charge everybody based on the faults of these 19% funds versus there's some that are 80 and 9, Eureka, I think their pension, police pension fund is 100% funded already. So, there are some that are, you know, they're at opposite ends of the spectrum. I don't think that will be ever passed, because I think the public would have an outcry, I would hope, that, you know, it would not be fair for one town to take on the burden of another town not using their funds in the past properly. The state of Illinois is in the same boat. I've als, also said, I can see that they might extend that 2040 down the road, because they'll never be able to get their own pension funds funded 90% by 2040. But if everything stays the same as it is right now, I'm thinking that this is the best road to take.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a comment just about the giving a little, putting a little bit more in now, so that down the road, I, I kind of equate it to, you know, a 401K, that, well, if you wait till you're 55, you know, to start saving for retirement, well, then you've got to just dump in, you know, a pot, where if you do a little bit over time, and I think that's kind of what you're, is, is do a little bit more over time, so we don't get hit in 2038 and have to come up with, 2039, have to come up with all that money. I think it's a good, smart move.
Julia, is it, I assume it's hypothetical to say that down the road, if, if numbers work in our favor, as far as the markets, that we could even trim that back some?
Yeah. Every year that they look at this, they'll look at what market returns we've had, what growth we've had in our investments, and then, you know, they calculate that amount. This is all based on, if everything, if our money we have today grows at 6%, with no other, more than six, no more than 6%, this is what it would look like. So, yes, if it, if it's worse, it's going to be a worse number, so.
Are we essentially talking about $50,000? Is that, is that the number?
For this year, based, compared to what we levy, I levied $676,000 for police pension for 2017, payable in 2018. The levy that we will be, I'll be bringing back here in the next month, will be for what's paid in 2019. This would increase that amount to 726.
Any other questions? So, the motion on the table would be to approve this and pay the additional $50,000?
And if at any time in the future, too, we decide this isn't the route, route we want to take, we, we can always change it, but it needs board's action to change it for this purpose.
Call the roll.
Lehman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Motion passed.
The next item under, my agenda under item B, excuse me, is, Business District Commission has recommended the approval of a building improvement grant for our Andrus Dental, which is at 637, or 636, excuse me, West Jefferson. They look to put $22,188 into their building, and the Business District is recommending they be approved for a grant of the $10,000 maximum for that. It's, what they're going to do is replace current signage, put new signage on the building, redo the landscaping, they're going to add handicap doors into the entrance on the front and the back, and then replace the concrete out front, there are some, on the entryway, there's some cracks and that type of thing, so.
Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
And lastly, on item C, the Business District discussed a proposal for payment of landscaping project at the U.S. Post Office at 600 West Jefferson. And I think Nate saved me and brought plans and left them out there in front for your arousal, and a copy of the estimate, because I forgot them. I will tell you that the Business District Commission had a tie vote. They didn't approve nor disapprove this, so they moved it forward for your approval or disapproval on your vote, not with no recommendation from them.
So, could we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, Nate, would you like to explain it?
Yeah, the big point is, the, the post office is, what I feel, kind of the gateway to Morton, there's probably more people that go through the post office on a daily basis than probably any other business in town. And if you, if you've been there recently, the landscaping is well past its lifespan, and really does not look very attractive, and I think it'd be really nice to, to spruce it up, get some nice landscaping, clean it up, and really make it a focal point of the community, as it, as it should be.
I have spoken to the postmaster, Mark Ford, and it is a safety concern with the big shrubs. He'd like to get those pulled out. When we offered to do this, he did apply to the federal government for some money, and he did get a $2,500 grant, which he would put toward this. So, I think the price was 16.7, and he's going to put that 2,500 toward it, so it'll actually only be 14.2 out of business district funds.
And do we have some assurances from them on them, the upkeep and the employees there taking care of it, right, from the postmaster?
I won't choose.
The postmaster talked about, you know, and getting funds is, is an issue from them, but they pay somebody now to yearly, to trim those bushes back.
Okay.
And, which, you know, is, it doesn't really help the aesthetics from that, and, and our hope is that they can take that money instead of trimming those bushes back, put it into maintaining some of this, and the, the landscaping that we've proposed is about as low maintenance, now, there's no such thing as no maintenance landscaping, but it's about as low maintenance as you can get. We have river rock maintenance strips around the parking areas, and, and the postmaster has, I feel, taken a vested interest in, you know, we ask, you know, who's going to be out there watering it, and he said, well, prob, probably me.
Right, and unfortunately, we could, I think it's probably safe to say that they're not going to be able to acquire all the funds to get anything done.
No, no, no.
And it's, it is.
He did get $500 to take the stumps out.
Yeah, aesthetically, it, it doesn't look good.
His main concern is the safety. Packing out, you can't see the cars around the shrubs. So, if we don't, if we don't approve it, he may tear out shrubs, but has no money to put anything back. So, in this proposal is to leave the big boulders, because they protect windows and that, but all the lava rock and all the shrubs come out, and that redone, and the plan does add a bike rack on the old concrete slab that's no longer used in the front. It used to be the drive-up, would be a bicycle rack there, and then marking on the pavement with the sidewalk, so anybody rides a bike, they can park it there. And then, he added landscaping, clean it up. That's what's proposed.
I just recall, when we approved this new system, this new video system, part of it was to increase the value and perception of the city as a professional city, and if the majority of people go through the post office, and that's their first impression, I think it's a good impression.
Not sure if this would be a better question for Julie, for Nate, but how, I wasn't able to hear some of the earlier conversations in regards to this, but how did the proposal come from SA Moreland? Was there other companies that bid it out the job, or how did that work?
Yes, we got two bids. The other was from DeAlontes.
You have to have two bids for anything through the Business District, so we got bids from two Morton landscapers.
Good. I, I did see Morton Business, that's a positive thing, so, that's my first thing I looked at. Make sure it's from Morton, so.
Good question. Any other comments? Not, call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. That all, Julie?
I'm done talking.
Okay. All right, Chief, please.
In your packet, I have overtime expenses that the department incurred for this year's festival. It's a little over $9,700.
Have a motion, please.
Compared to last year, there is nothing on there for dispatch.
Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Go ahead. Do you have a question?
No, I did actually not.
Okay. It keeps going, it keeps going up a little bit every year, but...
A little down this year from, from last year, about $700.
Yep.
Again, we, no dispatchers since we've had the consolidation, a little down on some of our auxiliary time, and I think the police overtime's, overtime was down a little bit. I had some officers in training last year that caused me to have to fill overtime for, for their shift as well.
But this doesn't include any of your time there every night?
No. I do plan in January to seek reimbursement through the hotel motel tax for the additional time that the deputy chief and I put down there.
I just asked that question, because I was down there, and I, they were there every night late.
We, we together put in about 80 hours down there, and that is on top of our regular duties.
Well, thank you.
And Mayor Toffin, I was, I was able to ask all my questions prior, actually, for this one. So, I saw that the, the number went from 10.4 down to 97, that's, that's good.
As long as we don't have any problems, I'm willing to write the check, so. No other comments, let's call the roll.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Corporation Council.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Director of Fire and Emergency Services?
Nothing tonight, Dr. I'm...
Thank you, Chief. Director of Public Works?
One item tonight, your honor. In front of you is item A, I'd like to ask for acceptance of proposal from EN Engineering out of Chicago, Illinois, for an alternating current or AC mitigation study for existing eight-inch gas pipeline in the amount of $19,000.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
The one thing I'd like to add is, we recently did the study in June by USDI that we previously or earlier this summer approved. We found issues, recommendations were made by USDI, we dug up several areas of our pipeline. Most of those were coating issues, I won't bore you with all the reasons, we fixed those, but more importantly, and the result of bringing this to you tonight, there are bubbles on some areas of concern, and with alternating current, unfortunately, a lot of pipelines, transmission lines, which are in this area, they share the right-of-way, and with alternating current, they can go both ways, so there's a couple different ways where you can get electricity or alternating current onto that pipe. It can be done through faults, something similar to like lightning, you know, where it's, it's not grounded, it dissipates into the ground, and then gets onto the pipe, or induce current, which would be, you know, an electric field, I'm not an expert at this, but electrical field, so if there's another conductor in that area, it could get onto the pipe there, and induce current is generated onto the pipe. So, those are concerns in not only us, but anybody with pipelines and right-of-way. The company that we have here, actually, we found them, they're doing work right now for Ameren, AC mitigation work on their 16-inch line in the same spot, so if you go over there by Veterans Road in Pekin, transmission line, same things, they're being proactive ahead of theirs in doing that. So, as a result, we are concerned about it, and we want to bring these guys in now, and then hopefully, we can get information back to the next fiscal to come up with a fix.
It's weird, why aren't we just talking about a safety issue regards to this, something on the right-of-way, I don't know, this one. Sorry.
So, yeah, this is our five-mile-long feeder pipe, so it's an eight-inch steel pipe, so the concern, to summarize that, is, you know, electricity or alternating current gets onto that pipe, and it can actually fail from the inside out. So, that's, the bubbles are weird, but they're concerning in some areas, where this study would look into why that might happen, and then we'd be able to do something as a result. I'm guessing it could be in the $100,000 fix, based on talking to these guys, after we come up with a plan to deal with this long-term.
Find out, find out where we're at, and...
Yes. And we have not done this to date, and I appreciate Scott Stidman's effort, he's very vigilant with this stuff. I actually went out there with him to look at our border station, and, I mean, we were all over the place. Very encouraged by Ameren and this company, from one person to the other person, really in about two hours in the field, with Scott, he's just very determined, just tracking down information. I mean, we're a small municipal, we don't have access to all, you know, that Ameren does, so it was, it was cool to run into this company that deals with this throughout the country, and get their help as quick as we can.
But you, but our gas superintendent is very proactive...
He is.
...on a lot of things. He's keeping Craig busy, and this is what we need, so.
So, if you'd like to see any of that, I'd like to get your approval tonight, but if you want to see some of that, we've got some pieces of the coating and kind of what I'm talking about, so hopefully, we can eliminate these current concerns. I'm talking about. So, hopefully, we can eliminate these current concerns going forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Call the roll. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a quick question. There's the $19,000, is that 100% from the gas one?
Yes.
Yep.
Call the roll.
Herr?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Parry?
Yes.
Bluenier?
Yes.
Motion passed.
That all?
That's all I have tonight.
Okay. Planning and zoning?
One item tonight, Your Honor. We will be at some point in the future getting some information from Tazewell County on another solar farm located within our mile-and-a-half radius of our corporate limits. So, this is a little bit ahead of that, that we'll be coming to you. So, tonight, I wanted to direct your attention. In your packet, there was a, a copy of the zoning map that shows where this proposed solar farm would be located. It's not within the corporate limits, it's adjacent. Just to give you a little bit of background, we, we did get an application from Cypress Creek Renewables for a solar farm that would have been located on North Main Street, pretty much across the street from where the Villas of Hollybrook is. And then after some back-and-forth conversation with them and their representatives, we, they decided to withdraw that request because it was within the corporate limits, and it was on Main Street. And they're working with a property owner that owns the property just adjacent to that, that's outside the corporate limits. But it meets with, after Craig and I put that map together that we brought to you several weeks ago, it fits within that scheme. So, they have a small presentation that they're going to give to you tonight. And so, tonight, we have Matt Kaufman with Cypress Creek Renewables and Nick Sandiford with Shane Banks, who represents Cypress Creek. So.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. I want to thank you for your service and for having us here tonight. I also want to thank Mr. Spangler, Mr. Lautermilke, who have, we've given us, they've given us input, and we've used that input to what we think is a good project for the, for Tazewell County. So, like Mr. Spangler said, we just wanted to allow the board to hear about what our project was. It's very close to the, it's actually bordering the village's boundary, so we thought it would be smart to come and tell you what the project is all about. So, the applicant is Bungalow Solar LLC, and that is a, it's indirectly owned by Cypress Creek Renewables. It's a company based out of Raleigh, North Carolina. They're a reputable national company that does this and does this very well. So, what these are, these are large solar fields. This is, in particular, is a two-megawatt field. You'll hear about how big it is, how much acreage it spans. Like, like we said earlier, so this is a copy of our, let's use this one. So, this is a copy of our, our application to Tazewell County. It's just for a special use for a solar farm. We don't need to rezone. The property is currently I-1 industrial, so all we need is a special use pursuant to their ordinance. So, CCR, like I said, is a national company. It has the financial backing to take on a project like this with significant investment in the community. The property is owned by Stephen and Kimberly Belzer. So, here's the property. It's a 74-acre site. So, actually, this parcel here, we can use this, too. Actually, it doesn't even show up on there. So, so the parcel here to the east is actually the same owner as the parcel to the west. And the parcel to the west is in the Village of Morton, and the parcel to the east is in Tazewell County. Here's the, here's the border right here. Like Mr. Spangler said, here are the villas, and then here's the FedEx shipment facility right here. I'll go through a map a little bit later in the next few minutes about the different uses and zoning in the, in the surrounding area. One thing of note is that this actually does occupy part, the project would need to utilize an access road through part of the western parcel. So, that western, that access road would be right there. And the reason it's cited as such is because that's where our interconnection point is. These are electric panels that need to connect to the grid. So, that's, the, Mr. Spangler wanted us to do a road, so we did a road. And we needed to do that because we initially envisioned being right off Main Street where we could have immediate access to the site. So, this is a little bit longer access road, but we're happy to do it in order to accommodate the, the village residents. So, that's the road that would be used for ingress and egress. It's in the Village of Morton. The land, like I said, is currently zoned, here it is in the, with the little teal border. It's currently zoned I-1 industrial, so it only needs a special use. I wanted to use the GIS map to show you the surrounding uses to kind of get a feel for how Tazewell County zones these, these properties. So, A-1 to the north, and then we have some I-2 right here to the south and to the east. So, luckily, we, there's no rezoning needed. It's consistent with the neighboring uses. And then here's Village of Morton right here to the west, so you can see. So, this is the Village of Morton's zoning map. The initial site we were going to choose was right here in the yellow, and that's zoned residential. So, we would have needed a rezone, text amendment. But since we're not in that, we're in Tazewell County here, and we, we're in industrial, we don't need to rezone. As you can see, there's A-1 to the east. There's a, there's an interesting bunch of different uses right here, and that's to accommodate the different needs in that area. So, we believe that our project is consistent with those needs. And then, as you can see, there's a lot of industrial I-2 to the south, and a little bit of I-1 to the east. And the I-1, I believe, is the FedEx. So, we believe that it's consistent with the uses. And then specifically, here are some of the different buildings that would be near the site. I think the site would be right about in here. There's the veterinary facility here, FedEx. I think there's a Walmart over here. So, this solar panel would be right here. It's approximately eight-acre fence with a solar, I actually have to go back and tell you how big it is. So, it's 74 acres. 25 of the acres are going to be used for the solar array, and that's at the southern portion of the property. So, it'll be tucked, tucked back off the roads. Here's a railroad here. So, it'll be fairly innocuous. These solar panels don't make a lot of noise. The only noise that you'll hear will come from the inverter, which I think is right here, Matt, in the center of the array. Someone's described it as a babbling brook. But I don't know if, hopefully, the, well, you've heard some testimony here tonight about energy suppliers creating scams. This isn't a scam. This is clean renewable energy with investment in the community, tax revenue for the county. It's low impact. The, you have a lot more visits by car to a site like this than you would a single-family home. I think we said three times a quarter or so for relative maintenance. The only time you'd see a substantial increase in traffic was during the construction or decommissioning of the site. So, it's, it's almost as low impact as farming. Some, some, some people could say it's less impactful than farming. And the best thing about solar is that these panels aren't there forever. At the end of the lease, they can be picked up and taken out of the ground. There's no cement, you know, pilings. These are steel pilings that go into the ground. They can be taken out for, for parts at the end of their life cycle. And the land can be returned to agriculture. So, we believe that it's a good use for this property. We're excited to have the, to come into this community. We haven't had a project in Morton, but we have had one in Tazewell. So, we just wanted to give Morton an idea of what this is all about. So, with that, I guess I'll let Matt fill in any areas that I might have missed. And want to thank you again for your time tonight and your service on the board.
Thank you.
I really don't have a lot more to add. Just want to reiterate what Nick said. This is a, you know, low-impact. At night, these facilities go dark. There's no noise created at night. The closest thing, as he said, you can hear, the inverter unit 150 feet away, you can't even hear the unit. So, at the fence line, there will be no noise from the facility at all. So, basically, these are passive neighbors. We're not going to require any public utilities to the site. We're not going to require water or any other burdens on the local infrastructure. So, appreciate your consideration and glad to answer any questions you all might have this time.
So, same, we've had one presentation, same thing, kind of a 20-year lease with five-year extensions.
Exactly.
Kind of is that the, the plan?
Yep.
And then the overall height of the actual?
Yeah.
I think it was pretty low. It's not as?
It's under 12 feet.
Right. And then the low, low maintenance, what did they, what were they calling it as far as the green?
Native grasses kind of thing.
Pollinator-friendly is what it was. That was the word I kept looking. I was like, the one where the bees like it, apparently.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so same.
We can do that. Yeah, we like native grasses, low-growing native grasses. Try to minimize growth, try to minimize activity at the site.
The road you talked about, is that a paved road?
It is paved, yeah. And, and I don't know exactly what the spec is on that. We would like to kind of get feedback on.
Craig would probably have something to put on that.
Yeah, I don't know if that needs to be like a state spec.
Roger told me they took it pretty good when they were required to put a paved road in. So, they've been pretty good so far to deal with.
Now, there is three, same owner, three parcels. So, that road would, I assume the owner is willing to put an access ingress, egress easement across that, just in case something was sold off or something. There should still be access.
Yep, exactly. We'll work with the landowner on that.
Terms of the contract, being a 20-year contract, so you have five-year potential. Does that go on indefinitely, or is there a limit?
Yeah, we have a maximum of 40-year term on the, on the project. So, I mean, assuming at the end of 40, assuming we leave it in that long, and at the end of, you know, 35 years, if the landlord says, and the electricity market's still good for that kind of thing, and the landlord says, yeah, keep it there, we could potentially renegotiate another contract. But plan is for, for maximum of 40 years.
So, to be clear, it's between you and the landowner. It can go on indefinitely, no matter what happens around that property? It could go on forever?
I mean, yeah, in theory, it could, I think. I think, I think there's, I mean, in terms of leases, there's a certain time period. I think it's like 99 years is the maximum anybody can ever do a lease, I believe. But I don't know if you know specifically Nick. But yeah, there's nothing technically that would stop us from doing that. I think we would have to, you know, we would have to obviously renegotiate with the landowner. So, yeah, that's.
So, if the landowner wanted to continue, and you wanted to continue, there's really nothing anybody can do?
I'm not sure about that, because if you go as far as our, the town limits, right, as we would grow, don't we pick up every once in a while? We have a limit on how much we can get to bring inside the actual village. Is that correct, Roger?
You annex?
Yeah.
There isn't a limit as to what we could annex.
Well, okay. So, I, I thought maybe there was a actual, like, but over time, we could annex property, and then it would come within the city limits, and then that would change. Because then he would have to apply for different, it wouldn't be in the county, it would actually be within the city limits, if you were talking about over 50 or 60 years, Rod.
If they annexed into the property, they would have an existing lawful non-conforming use, and that could continue indefinitely.
Okay.
That's one of my questions. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that.
To be clear on annexation, we, we can't forcibly annex unless you're surrounded, so it's up to the property owner to petition for annex.
Yeah, I figured the potential would be there for this one over the next 50 years if we're talking about that, for that to be annexed, if we had that kind of growth. But again, that would be a good problem to have, not, not a foreseeable one in the next 20.
I think the ground would be so worth, so worth so much money.
That's right.
The farmer would not renew.
You know, I don't, don't think so.
Okay. Any other questions?
The property that Mr. Belzer owns, there was a conversation where, at one point, it was closer to that Main Street, and obviously, the zoning was an issue. And I think there was probably some pushback also, how close that was to town.
Yep, exactly.
Pushback some, so it is better in that, in that regards. I guess a question more or less is if you move north, there's a property that's passing railroad tracks. Has there was a conversation at some point to, to try that area, since that was even further out of town?
Further, on the north side of the railroad tracks, you were saying?
Correct.
I think, if I remember right, I think we looked at that a bit. I think the biggest problem we had there was crossing the railroad. It's, it's often very difficult for the utility easement across the railroad. And then I think we were a little bit limited on our acreage there to get everything in up there, if I remember correctly.
Wouldn't you also, just the access to the grid itself?
Exactly, yeah. And we would have to, you know, we would have to get an easement through that railroad crossing. And those are pretty, often pretty difficult.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Yeah, exactly.
That's not.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can't get them to clean up the railway tracks.
[laughing]
Or their brush. So, any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Village trustees, anybody got anything, Nate? If not, we have no closed sessions needed. So, if I could have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.